Meeting in order. It's the Amador County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, November 26, 2024. Would you please join us in a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the fighting of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. The board met in closed session this morning. Items we met on were item one, conference with real property negotiators, direction was given. Item two, conference labor negotiators, direction was given. Item three, conferences with county council, anticipated litigation, direction was given, and confidential minutes were approved. With that, we have public matters not on the agenda. Is there any items that members of the public would like to discuss that is not on the agenda? If so, please come forward, state your name for the record, and sign in. Looks like I have no public comment, no Zoomers. Board members?
No.
Well, moving on down to approval agenda. On the consent agenda, we'll get that later. Look for approval agenda.
I'll make...
For second.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion by Axe, a second by Drew. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimous. Moving down to approval of item on the consent agenda, we have request to pull item seven, aye. Consent agenda, this is environmental health software. We'll pull it through a future meeting.
Okay.
Would approve consent agenda with that item pulled off?
Second.
A motion by Forrester, second by Axe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It carries unanimous. Also, we're looking to move item five C. We're gonna move that up and take it first because the party has a commitment they have to go to. So we're taking at this time item five C. This approval since it heights CSDs, boards, financial, fiscal requirements. Mr. Regan?
Good morning, Sean Regan.
Morning.
CSD, Sunset Heights, Pine Grove.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. Well, no questions, and we have resolution that we need to have a motion approved.
I'll make a motion then to approve the Sunset Heights CSD fiscal audit requirements resolution dated 11/9/24, and that includes the county auditors, which is county auditor's recommendation. Second?
I do have a question.
Okay. I was gonna ask that.
Tacey, could you come up? No, you want to make this fast, but does this really save them anything? Because in all the organizations I'm on that do an audit, the, whether you do a one-year or two-year or multi-year, the auditors double their price on the, if you do a two-year, because they say it's that much more work to have to look at the previous year. So it's not going to save them a bunch of money, is it?
Well, it's gonna get them in compliance, and when I say, because they haven't had an audit, and a special district has to have an audit at least every five years. So this will cover, my understanding, one year. So we're gonna do compilations for four years in between, and then have a one-year audit. I think that's sufficient.
Okay, if that's the goal, but as long as they know it's not gonna, probably not gonna save them a whole bunch of money.
No, the key point was getting in compliance.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Sure.
Just devote on it.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you. Let's see. We've had a motion and a second. Amor's a public like to comment on this issue. And you made the motion, was it Axe?
Forrester.
Forrester?
No.
I was Axe. The motion.
Oh. And I seconded.
Okay, so Axe made the motion, Brown was the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It carries unanimous. Thank you. Now we'll take item five A, this approval resolution of appreciation to Fiddle Conservancy for their work in cleaning up McCallum River. Craig, any items you want to say? Or talk about it at all?
Good morning, Supervisors. Craig Brown here, Fiddle Conservancy. Just appreciate the board considering this resolution. It's really, it honors the work of all the volunteers. For the last over thirty years, Fiddle Conservancy has been organizing cleanups along the McCallum River. More recently, we've sort of expanded our efforts to include a wider range of watersheds, Jackson Creek, other locations. It's really, this resolution is a tribute to the volunteer efforts of the residents of Amador County to help clean up and maintain their community, their drinking water, their natural environment. We'd like to thank folks who have financially supported the effort in recent years. It's the Sutter Health Foundation and Jackson Rancheria have both contributed to support our efforts. Also, ACES Way Services, now Republic, has been absolutely tremendous in their donation of their disposal services. They basically, over the years, have been giving us an increasing discount on bins and disposal services to the, now we basically get our bins for free. We fill them up with volunteers and work and move a tremendous amount of material at very little cost to anyone. And I think it's really a tribute to our community spirit that we're able to keep this program going and, in fact, expand it as time has gone on. So just like to thank everyone involved and...
How's that gonna change with the new ownership?
The commitment is that they will maintain their previous commitments, and we've had recent projects where we've gotten dumpsters and disposal services from the newly rebranded Republic at the same low, low free cost that ACES was giving us. So that transition has actually been very smooth for us, and we really appreciate it because it expands our reach tremendously, that being the main kind of cost involved in doing this.
Yeah, I think everybody, at least everybody I know in Amador County loves and appreciates a river, so it's, cleaned up's a good thing.
I do get a kick out of, your next cleanup is January 18th at 10 o'clock near River Road and Highway 26. You're gonna be cold. I hope you guys have been bundled up warm.
Indeed. It's, this is an example of a different site we're trying. There's, this is more an issue of legal dumping along the River Road.
Right.
And we, I appreciate, Roger Brown, your efforts to help us out in promoting this and...
I haven't put it out just yet, but I'm going to. I just wanted to put it out a little bit before.
I anticipate thanking you for the help in helping publicize it up in the off country.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
You know, I think at this point, I'll probably go ahead and read the resolution, and then probably take some public comment, more public comment. So we, thank you. So here we have a resolution recognizing Fiddle Conservancy and its partners. Whereas the Fiddle Conservancy began holding McCallum River cleanups in 1991, it's held at least one cleanup event every year since. And whereas over the decades since its inception, the conservancies, McCallum River cleanups have removed over 25 tons of trash and recyclables from the river's banks. And whereas the Conservancy's McCallum River cleanup is primarily focused on the most popular and frequently used sections of McCallum River in Amador and Calaveras Counties. And whereas beginning in 2021, the Fiddle Conservancy and its local partners, David Jackson, Sierra Wind, Sutter Health, and Jackson Rancheria began the Watershed Protection Alliance to remove trash, debris, and recyclables from encampments along Amador County rivers and streams. And whereas those WPA cleanups have resulted in the removal of over 33 tons of material from the watersheds of Amador and Calaveras Counties. And whereas the Fiddle Conservancy has engaged community members and others who love our natural environment and value water quality to volunteer time and energy to help remove trash recyclables through McCallum River cleanups and WPA projects. Whereas the Conservancy has successfully partnered with ACES Way Services, East Bay Municipal Utility District, local businesses, whitewater boating organizations, unhoused local residents, local service clubs, including the Jackson Lions, the Amador County Homeless Task Force, the U.S. Forest Service, the Bureau of Land Management, Amador County Sheriff's Department Heart Team, and others to coordinate its cleanup efforts and lead East Bay Mud to expand annual McCallum River-related cleanups to its local lands. Therefore, it resulted that the Amador County Board of Supervisors recognize this decade-long effort by Fiddle Conservancy and its partners and express its appreciation of all of the work so long, for so long, to keep our Amador, McCallum River and local streams clean, a safe place for public recreation, providing healthy habitat for fish and wildlife. The foregoing resolution was duly passed at the top of the Board of Supervisors and the County of Amador at a regular meeting thereof, held on the 26th day in November 2024. And I'd imagine it's probably gonna be unanimous vote at some point, but how about we go ahead and have a vote on the resolution now?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution recognizing the Fiddle Conservancy and its partners.
Second.
A motion by Axe, second by Brown, and we'll go ahead and pass it and then take public comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I think we'll go ahead and present the resolution this time. We have a little more public comment.
Good morning, Ty Pulse Camp, Jackson. It's been a really wonderful opportunity, this Watershed Protection Alliance project, in helping to empower folks to deal with their own waste. As one might imagine, if you don't have a bin by your house to dispose of your waste every week, it gets pretty tricky. So each of the Watershed Protection Alliance cleanups that have involved folks living outside here in our community have involved the people living outside here in our community. So we've had easily a half dozen to a dozen participants who are part of the unhoused community participating in each of those cleanups. The emphasis really should be the collaboration here, because if we don't find ways for different entities to work together, it really limits our options, both for success together, but also for funding. So maybe you've heard the term braiding. That's sort of a new hot topic for collaboration. It's another way of saying collaboration. So moving forward, looking at projects like this and other projects, braiding services or collaborating is really crucial to getting the best bang for our buck here locally. At this point, Watershed Protection Alliance has facilitated the placement of dumpsters that allow the folks in those communities to get rid of their waste on their own. So it would be, I would be remiss to not acknowledge all of the people who live outside who are participating in the disposal of their own waste. So this is not a project where folks are fixing and enabling other people's problems. They're empowering them to participate in the process themselves. And that was largely created by Carol Carlson, who is no longer living, and so I would like to acknowledge her effort in pulling together the Watershed Protection Alliance, which has done that 33 tons of waste removal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? You know, one thing I would like to mention a little bit, I mean, it's, I think it's not just homeless residents in Amador County that contributed to cleanup, which they did, but also, I think, even all residents of Amador County. And being as that was brought up, I'd like to mention a little thing of interest. Do I have sympathy and empathy for the homeless? Sure. It's a big problem, and it's gotten bigger and bigger and bigger. But I think sometimes we need to look at not just the homeless problem, which is, I feel sorry for them. It's a problem in society. It's a problem for them, but we need to look at how they get homeless. I mean, drugs are a big issue, sure, but also look at something else. I remember the spotted owl when it came along, and what it did to our local economy, our lumber mill. We've got a beautiful Safeway now and some other nice stores. We used to have a lumber mill there, and that lumber mill provided a lot of good jobs, and you didn't have to have a, you didn't have to have a master's degree to get a good job, be able to support a family, send your kid to college, buy a house, have a home. So what I saw happen, spotted owl came along, it shook up the timber industry, the mills went away, lumber to build homes went away, our forest went away, and ultimately, I think it probably helped contribute to our homeless crisis. So it's just food for thought. I think there's, and no Zoomers, was there, Jennifer? So thank you for your efforts, and I'm sure we'll see a lot of the people out cleaning up the river, because we do like a river. Thank you. At this time, we have item five B, this update and tree mortality mitigation activities by Ted Mason, TSS consultant. Dr. Richard Harris and Ed Struveneger.
Familiar faces again out there.
Good morning.
Everybody survived the elections, I guess. So I see Chuck's not around on vacation, I guess, and who's gonna run the, are you? Okay, so you have a little clicker? Yeah, I'll just tell you when to move on, okay?
Just give her a...
What?
Just give her a hand signal.
I will, yeah.
Okay.
Actually, I like it better than the clicker, because usually I screw up the clicker.
Yeah.
So it's better anyway. So, you know, you guys all know me, Richard Harris, and I'm the program manager for the project. Ted is, of course, the principal in charge and the boss, TSS consultants, and then Ed is your contract forester. So we've been doing this since when?
Long time. What a while.
2016, I believe.
I had more hair back then.
Yeah. You know, we've survived. I think virtually every other county in the 10 mortality counties has dropped out. The only one I heard from recently was Tulari County. They were gonna do some work. But other than that, Calaveras County shut down, and other counties, I think, are not doing this anymore. But the proclamation on tree mortality is still in effect. OES is still reimbursing people for projects. And in this particular case, for the last two projects we just finished, we had a good neighbor authority agreement with the Forest Service, which covers what's not reimbursed by OES. So these last two projects are gonna be 100% reimbursed. So that's a good deal.
Oh, no, it is. I mean, you figure the cost of a local residence, if they had to individually go and try to get that work done, I mean, the benefit is huge.
Oh, incredible. I mean, people pay thousands of dollars to remove these trees, you know, that are extreme hazards. Okay, so let me just go through it quickly. Since we began in 2017, I guess it was 2017, I think we were authorized in 16, but we started in 17. We've done 27 projects, 10,680 trees have been mitigated, and the documentation for reimbursement's been submitted to OES, and I don't believe we've had, is anybody here from auditor's office or that knows? I mean, I think everything's been reimbursed to date, and then I've just submitted the reimbursement requests for the last two projects to the county, to the county, so those will be put forward.
Dr. Harris, if the county wasn't getting reimbursed, I think we'd have heard about it, and I haven't yet, so...
Oh, okay, great. So we've hit all the county roads, you know, bordering private Forest Service and BLM properties, and there's been 16 different companies that have done the work. We had two new ones this last go-round, and we haven't had any real issues at all in terms of property damage and no worker injuries. Zero worker injuries, which is a real big deal, to me, anyway.
Dr. Harris, what was, what was the property damage, mostly just fences and things like that?
Yeah, we've had a couple of fences. We had, what's the worst one?
Ed.
You guys know Ed, right?
Yeah, good morning. Yeah, I'm Ed Struveneger. Good morning, everybody, chairman and board members. So, yeah, the property damage was, we had one project up in the Buckhorn Pioneer area where we had a branch came off a tree, hit a roof, put a hole in the roof. We had the contractor, contract with a roofing company to go ahead and get that fixed, which was successfully fixed. That same contractor had another branch break out from a tree and hit a deck, damaged the railing and the deckboards on the deck, and that was the other one there. Wasn't that a whole bunch of crane trees too in that job? There were, there were some crane trees, but these were trees that they thought it could get down, but it is so tight up there, branches break off, they go flying, and then you have that, you know, flying debris type of issue there. So, but yeah, the property owners were all very happy with the repairs that were done, and those were the two most recent and probably the two most significant property damages we had there, so.
The only other one that I know of is one of the timber fallers fell the tree through his truck.
I saw a picture. It wasn't pretty.
No. We can go on to the next slide.
Maybe the wrong business for him to be in.
Well, it was a, it was a very punky tree, and it rotated, so he didn't intend to have it fall that direction, but that's what happened, right? It just rotated on the stump and went the wrong direction. Okay, so we just finished two projects, a national forest at Bear River and at Silver Lake, and we cut over 1,500 trees on those projects. And if you guys are familiar with the Silver Lake wreck tracks, you know how tight it is in there. And we just finished that project, and talk about no property damage. I mean, there were trees literally right next to houses that were 120 feet tall, and these folks were able to get them all out with no problem. So that's, we're really, we're really grateful that we were able to finish those projects before the snow flu flies, whatever. They were able to get it all done before we got shut down for the winter. So now we're virtually shut down, right? I mean, the roads are closed. Whereas at December 1st, I guess the road is closed, the Bear River.
Yeah, I saw some of the trees up there, Silver Lake, the cabin track there, and they were some pretty tough trees in there, big ones too.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, it was good. We've had two projects up there where, you know, Rich Stevens did one, the one previous, and, you know, in both cases, things worked out really well. And the property owners up there, you know, the wreck residents are just tickled pink, because those trees are, you know, those are really multi-thousand-dollar trees. Okay, so we're just started project 23, and this is county roads west to Highway 49. They're moving right along. I mean, how far along do you think they are, Ed, at this point?
Yeah, they're well over halfway done with the project. They are now working on Irish Town Road between Ione and Carbondale and working their way towards Carbondale, Plymouth, so they're hoping to finish that project maybe next week if we have good weather. Plymouth. So they're hoping to finish that project maybe next week if we have good weather. Who's doing that project?
Mario's Tree Service.
Okay.
And, uh, we've had some interesting experiences with Mario's in the past, but they're, they're, I would say they're a lot better when they're working for us rather than PG&E in terms of, you know...
That's a little scary.
Yeah, it's scary. But, but, you know, and PG&E, they're, they're just doing what PG&E tells them to do. And that means leaving the trees behind, which creates a problem for landowners. Now, in, in our projects, everything gets taken away unless people want the trees.
Plus, I'm sure they probably know that they got you and, you and Ed on their case, so they're, they're to be good.
Well, you know, their, their supervisor's been really good. I mean, excellent, as a matter of fact. So I think we're good with them. Okay, there's 60 parcels in that project, 140 trees. It should wrap up, as Ed said, it should wrap up next week. Okay? Next slide? So just, you know, a little depiction of what we've been doing, all those little red dots are trees along Bear River Road and Little Bear River Road. Uh, next slide. There's all the trees at the, in the two rec tracks, uh, at Silver Lake. Uh, next slide will show you how dispersed the project 23 is. Basically, it goes from one end of the county to the other. And there's like one tree here and there's like one tree there. So it's kind of, we, uh, what some of our contractors refer to these as Easter egg hunts, uh, because the trees are not, you know, all clustered together, right? Okay, next slide? Okay, so here's, one of the things we did at Silver Lake and at Bear River was we followed really the guidelines of the Forest Service for a conventional timber sale, which means that we decked the logs for the Forest Service to sell. Okay? Uh, hopefully that'll happen. Uh, in the past, we've decked logs for them to sell and then the, and the decks are still there. So we're hoping that they can sell these logs. We'll, we'll see what happens. Uh, these pictures are kind of weird, but over on the right on the top, you can see the size of that tree next to the guy, right? Man, there were some huge trees up there in Silver Lake. Huge trees. Uh, okay, next slide. So new mortality is still happening. We, Ed and I have been doing surveys. Uh, we just, you know, began last week doing surveys. We've hit a few of the roads, uh, mostly lower country so far. Uh, so far we found 59 trees. Uh, we've done about 20% of the county so far. We'll go out again tomorrow. Um, we expect to see a lot more mortality up around Pine Grove and Pioneer. Um, you know, the higher you go, get up, it seems like the more mortality you're seeing. It's pretty much, you know, more scattered down here at the lower elevations. And plus, you don't have the susceptible species. You don't have the, uh, the incense cedar, you don't have the ponderosa pine, which are more susceptible. Um, so we're still, we think we'll probably have a few, a few hundred trees in, in the next project. And the next project will be a countywide project. Just one big project.
Easter egg hunt.
Yeah. And, uh, there's a couple of reasons for doing that. Uh, one is Cindy Engel, who's been doing our mapping, has, um, decided not to do it anymore. So we have to, we're going to have to scramble to do a little bit of innovative GIS work. And, and the easiest way to do it, as far as I'm concerned, and I did this in Nevada County, I took a map of all the county roads. And I did one big project where I did a survey for all the dead trees along the county roads. Now, Ed and I, Ed and I did this. So we had one map for the whole county with all the county roads on it. And then we had, you know, GPS points for all the trees. So it was just like one big map. So we'll probably do that in, in this next project as well.
So as you, as you're marking those trees, you're still using AC and then the number of the tree?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. And, um, as far as I know, I mean, I don't know, I haven't heard much about PG&E actions in the county recently. Have you, Ed?
Yeah, we're still seeing PG&E trees being marked. Uh, we're still seeing those designations being done by their, their tree crews. Uh, it's definitely not the, uh, scale and pace that we had a few years ago. Uh, but we definitely see that there is, uh, the trees that are popping up, uh, that they're, they're taking care of those power line trees. Um, and, and maybe getting back to what Richard just said about the new mortality, uh, that middle picture there in, in his slide is along Ridge Road, and you may have seen that tree. And it was just, uh, turning in the course of a matter of like two weeks, three weeks. And you drive up there one day and the tree is green. And you come back just a couple of weeks later and it's looking like that. So we're, we're seeing a lot of late season type of mortality. Uh, and so we hope to capture most of that with our survey that we're doing right now.
Ed, what, what causes that to happen so quickly? Do the, the bugs just sense it and go after it?
You know, the, the short answer is probably yes. Uh, but we talked to a, a PhD forest entomologist and a PhD forest pathologist that should have given us all the specific answers of what's going on in the county. We basically asked them point blank, you know, how long is this problem going to be with us? And, and they couldn't give us an answer of, uh, you know, what has caused these trees to die? It's, it's a complex interaction of things, uh, tree physio, physiology. I mean, those trees were stressed from several years of droughts years ago. Uh, and so they're weakened. We do have insects, we do have diseases, we have other things going on, parasitic plants, dwarf mistletoe, big problem in the high country with, uh, dwarf mistletoe and the white fur. But, you know, there's a whole, there's a whole range of things that are acting together that are basically going to sort of be with us, I think, for probably quite a while. Uh, the, the other pictures that we have up there, uh, are up in the Buckhorn area. We're, we're getting calls. I got a call from somebody says, I think I got some dead trees in my front yard. And I go out there and there's like 20 large ponderosa pines dead in a group right there, uh, up in, in Buckhorn. And, um, you know, so we're still seeing those pockets still happening. Uh, that one was definitely, uh, bugs, uh, western pine beetle. You can see the woodpeckers going after the beetles in the tree. That's a pretty telltale sign that I got killed by the, by the beetles there. So...
Uh, see, I think, is there one more slide? Let's see. Oh, yeah. We're just, um, reiterating the issue of new mortality. Um, we have not done the analysis yet of where we stand with the Forest Service, Good Neighbor Authority. They allocated X number of dollars in that, in that, uh, project to, to offset the 25% that the county would have had to pay. And we don't know if there's some money left over. And so we're hoping there's some money left over or that they can supplement the budget. Because there's still a boatload of trees up there, especially at Silver Lake, that we were not able to mark because we ran out of money for add-on trees. So we're hoping that, you know, we can, uh, roll that into next year to do another project up at Silver Lake and maybe the Bear River. Um, and that, you know, it worked out very well. This, we had a lot of angst at the beginning with the Forest Service, but it finally, you know, came to fruition. Everybody's happy, you know? So, so we're good. Okay. So that's it, as far as I'm concerned. Oh, yeah. Moving forward about the recon surveys we're doing. And again, I, I mentioned about negotiations with the Forest Service. Uh, and then if, if there's any questions, you know, on the OES exhibits we've submitted for the Forest Service projects, it's a little bit different because it's a good neighbor authority reimbursement request. You know, if, uh, your staff needs any help with that. I know we lost John. John Hopkins went away.
Yeah.
He's too young to retire, isn't he?
He started pretty young. He's got a, he had, he had like 41 years in.
Wow. Okay. All right. I, I take it back. All right. Anyway, if you guys need any help with, uh, with the reimbursement requests, you know, just, just holler.
Dr. Harris, didn't, what, there for a while, wasn't Cal Fire picking up part of that cost also?
Yeah, for the first, for the first couple, I guess it was for the first year or two, they were offsetting the 25% with what they called, uh, local assistance on tree mortality. You know, for a while you guys were making money. Because, I think you remember, I won't, I won't go into the details, but for a while you guys were actually making money. So...
Don't, don't be talking about that now.
I'm not going to talk about it. There's no...
What's the best way to, uh, the public to contact you?
What's that?
What's the best way for the public to contact you?
To contact me? Just...
Tree mortality task force.
Well, actually, you know, the tree mortality website?
Okay.
Is gone. It's gone.
Okay.
Okay. So way back when, they were supposed to renew the license and it was decided not to renew the license. So there's no tree mortality website anymore. So people can't reach me through there. So, um, you know, we put out press releases. And, you know, I could put out a press release now, just kind of reiterating the fact that we're good going and doing new surveys. In fact, I'll do that.
Yeah, please email, email it to me. I appreciate it. I can put it out there on social media.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I know we go through Nextdoor sometimes. And, uh, so Facebook, I don't know if people even use Facebook anymore. But, but anyway, I'll, uh, remind me, Brian, you have my email address. Remind me that, um, to send you, send, um, send him.
Okay.
Okay. Cause I'm not sure that, you guys should have all my contact information. But I'll, I'll, I'll make sure I send it to you.
Dr. Harris, just a question. You said early on that we're one of the only counties still doing it?
I think so.
So shouldn't there be a bigger pot of money if...
No, it's, it's not that, it doesn't work that way. It works, you know, basically, uh, the reimbursement is sort of ad hoc. I mean, there's not a fund for reimbursement. You know, it's, it's the California Disaster Assistance Act. And so it's, it's more like, uh, you know, as an event happens, then money becomes available.
Funds is, bills come in.
So, you know, I do know that, uh, well, Nevada County, they funded it through a Cal Fire, uh, grant, fire prevention grant. And I think some other counties are going that route. But I haven't heard of any counties that are, you know, still doing the way we're doing it.
But the bug trees are still happening in their counties, right?
What's that?
They're still having the same bug tree problems in these other counties?
I suppose. I mean, you know, like I said, I heard from Tulare County, they asked me to send them a copy of our contracts so that they could, you know, figure something out. Uh, I know Nevada County, I just, you know, finished a resurvey up there and, you know, found another 700 trees. So, I mean, that was last year. So it's still happening. I mean, I don't know why people aren't participating, to tell you the truth.
That was going to be my next question. Aren't we just the pioneers on this or...
Uh, I, more like the grandfathers.
Last the Mohicans, I think, actually.
They're more like the grandfathers than the pioneers. I mean, you're one of the first 10 mortality counties, but you're the only one that's still hanging in there. So it's kind of weird.
The first and the best. I mean, the state always made the, the point that Amherst County did things correctly.
Exactly. I mean, that, that is true. We've been the role model.
Thank you.
All right.
We're good.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
You gentlemen.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public have any questions, concerns?
Chairman. Hello, this is Tad Mason.
Hello, Ted.
Chairman Onell. Yes. Um, just a quick comment. We will work on that press release as requested and we'll work through Chuck and get it out to the board. Secondly, I would like to acknowledge the assistance of the County Department of General Services, the A-Team with John Hopkins, Danielle Whitaker, and Chantel Kinsey has been extremely helpful to assist us on the administrative side of the tree mortality program. There's a lot of work on the contracting side, as you can imagine, insurance certificates, et cetera, that must be in place to conduct this work. And they have been extremely helpful. So would like to acknowledge the Department of General Services and the fact that we will be missing, uh, John Hopkins. Thank you.
Also too, um, as far as acknowledgements, um, Cindy Engel helped you folks a lot. And I think she also helped, um, as far as like ACTC and in the county and GIS. And, um, we wish her well on her retirement. And she was, she was a real trooper. She really helped them a lot of projects. So with that, any more comments on the board?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you. Moving on, we have item five D, Community Assistance Recovery and Empowerment Act. Care, this is the CARE Court update.
Good morning.
Morning.
Melissa Cranfield, Behavioral Health Director. Um, I wanted to come and give a, just a, a brief update about CARE Court since it's going to be going live next week on December 1st. Um, this is, it's Community Assistance Recovery and Empowerment, Empowerment Act. And it's just quick five slides. And this is something that at different meetings throughout the community, I'll present, be presenting as well, just to educate our community about what CARE Court is, what CARE Court isn't, um, who can petition, who would qualify, and just a little bit about what the program looks like and how to get more information. So the, the first part is what is CARE Court? And, and one of the main things I think that it's important for everyone to know is that this is a voluntary program. So I think hearing the words court and something associated with the court, there's some, um, concerns that there's something, you know, criminal or legal about it. But it is, it is a voluntary, it is a voluntary program. And the goal is to try to provide services and ports to those that have a diagnosed schizophrenia spectrum disorder. Um, a path, a path in, anybody can petition. It doesn't have to be the Behavioral Health Department. You could be a family member, a community member, first responder. Anybody can be a petitioner. If there's somebody that they know that they know that they have a schizophrenia spectrum disorder, or they're concerned that they do, and they're over the age of 18, they can complete the petition form.
I don't understand one thing you said. You said it's a voluntary program.
Yes.
And yet others can petition on their behalf.
Yes.
So are they petitioning without their knowledge or consent?
It, it can be with their knowledge or without. And then when the petition goes, goes to the court, then they can, the, the person can agree or not agree to the program.
Depending on what stage of schizophrenia they're in.
Well, it depend, yeah. And part of it depends on how their level of competency and their capacity to be able to consent. And I think for those that are that severe and there's concern of grave disability, which they wouldn't be able to consent or not, then those evaluations would probably go a little bit different.
So it sounds like it's somewhat involuntary.
The state is telling us it's a voluntary program.
Okay.
I mean, I think it might take an avenue where if, if it, there are significant concerns and someone is found to be gravely disabled, that it could shift to maybe looking at, um, LPS conservatorship due to the mental health diagnosis. Um, but, but care itself is, is a voluntary program. Yeah, yeah. I know it's, it's very confusing, especially when they start saying that certain things can be ordered, but if it's court ordered, but it's still voluntary.
Okay.
And so then paths out, it's typically would be a one-year program at month number 11. It's determined, has the person met the goals of their plan and are they going to be graduated? Or do they think they need to continue with the program for another year? And it can be extended up to one year. So a total of two years. It can't extend beyond that. But that doesn't mean that services disappear. So after someone has graduated or completed the care program, they could still receive behavioral health services and the other supports and community services that they may be receiving during the, during the program.
How many people are, would fall into this category?
We're not sure. Because one of the things that automatically disqualifies somebody from participating in the program is if they're already voluntarily engaged in services. So even if somebody isn't engaged in services and somebody, a family member fills out a petition, and then the court reaches out to us to try to contact the person to do the evaluate, the initial evaluation. And if we evaluate that person and they are willing to engage in outpatient services at behavioral health, and we get them signed up and they start engaging, then they don't qualify for the care program. So, so our goal is to try to get folks into services. So then there isn't this ongoing, you know... So our goal is to try to get folks into services, so then there isn't this ongoing, you know, oversight.
But why did the state develop this policy if there's already programs in place that are doing some of this, or is there a real unmet need here? And is this to divert people away, you know, that might have committed criminal acts, low level, to keep them out of the criminal justice system because of their impairment or disposition?
I think that was part of it. I think that there are, there are, there are a lot of folks that have untreated mental health conditions, and so I think that's where the gap is.
This is very specific.
And it is very specific.
Vast majority have, you know, more garden, I now don't mean to trivialize it, but more garden variety issues.
Right, and if somebody has a bipolar diagnosis, they wouldn't qualify if, you know, so there, so it is, it's very narrow, it's very specific of who would qualify. But I think the original intent of the program was to try to capture folks that are seriously mentally ill with a schizophrenia diagnosis or a psychotic disorder that are not engaging in treatment, and some of those may be, like you said, low-level criminal activity to try to get them engaged in treatment rather than criminalizing mental health. Early on, there was a lot of discussion that this was really supposed to be trying to help with the homeless issue for those that are untreated, with untreated mental health conditions that are unhoused. So housing is a component of CARE Court. If you have a CARE Court participant that is unhoused, then part of our role is to find them housing, and we have to prioritize housing for them. So I think in our county, because we're small, I think most of the folks we know, and so there are probably maybe a handful of people that would meet the criteria, that are not engaged in services, but most of the other folks that are known to us with these diagnoses and that would meet the criteria are already engaged in treatment, so they wouldn't qualify. Okay, we'll go to the next slide. And I've already talked a little bit about this, I'm not gonna read this whole slide, it's a lot of information, but the bottom line for this is that somebody has to be 18 or older, they have to have a schizophrenia spectrum diagnosis, just like I said, it's pretty, pretty narrow, and they have to have significant impairments. It can't be somebody who has a diagnosis of schizophrenia but is medicated and functioning well, it has to be somebody that's having some significant impairments and is not in treatment. Okay, and we can go to the next slide. And so the care process itself is, there's flow charts and it's very, very confusing, but in a nutshell, just a very broad overview is that there will be, after the initial petition happens, it goes to court, the court determines that, okay, this person may qualify for the care program, then behavioral health will become, become the petitioner. If we're not already the petitioner, we then have to engage with the person, do an evaluation. Our goal is to try to get them in treatment. If we get them in treatment, the process stops. If they're not going to engage in treatment, then we have to continue our efforts of outreach and engagement to try to do that, we have to provide reports to the court, then we come to a place where we can either do a care agreement or a care plan. The care agreement is when the participant actually agrees to the goals and develops that. If they do not voluntarily agree to this plan, then it goes to a care plan. From a care agreement, then we would do a care plan, which is something that is then ordered by the court, even though the state says it's still voluntary. I'm not really clear how the difference really is going to be, and I think that's something that we're trying to learn from the Cohort 1 counties, and I was just on a call yesterday and I still really don't have an answer, because it sounds like it's the same, and most counties are utilizing the same form, they're just marking a box on the top that says agreement or plan, and it seems like the agreement is they agree early on to do it, and the plan is they're agreeing a little bit later, and there's a little more oversight. But we will be doing status reviews, I believe it's every 60 to 90 days, and so it'll be a lot of oversight and collaboration with the court during this process.
I don't remember, was there a small county in the Cohort 1?
Yes, Glenn County and Tuolumne.
And have you been in touch with them? And what, Glenn's a little bit more problematic than Tuolumne, isn't it, as far as the number of possible people that could enter into CARE Court?
When, I guess it was maybe a month or so ago when we went to the convening in Sacramento, Glenn County had shared that they had had two petitions in the first year and only one went through the process. Yesterday, when I was on that call, Glenn was on the call, and they have now, since then, have had a total of 17 petitions and five people in the program. And so I asked what had changed. It's been almost a year of CARE Court in their county, and they'd had two petitions, and now a couple months later, or a month and a half later, there's 17. And they said, because the state was really encouraging the behavioral health departments to start becoming the petitioner and start seeking out folks and doing petitions for people, and so that is what amped up, amped up their numbers.
About Tuolumne?
And I don't know, I don't know Tuolumne's numbers off the top of my head, they weren't on the call yesterday, that, they didn't present on the call, so that's something I could look into and see, but it wasn't anything, I mean, maybe they had, I remember previous calls, they had more than Glenn, but not by much.
So is that really the state's job to encourage counties to go out and search for people?
I'm not sure. And one of the things that we had asked when they presented that during the convening is because they were saying, you know, behavioral health should be doing this outreach and engagement, it's part of the program. In the program, there is outreach and engagement that we're responsible for, but that's after somebody has already, there's already been a petition, and the court is saying, let's try to get this person connected. But there's nothing in the act that says behavioral health should be doing this outreach and engagement prior. So we'll see how that changes moving forward. And so when is this available? Like I said, the court is gonna start taking petitions December 1st. All of the rest of Cohort 2 counties are supposed to be going live on December 1st, so. And we're actively having, still having meetings and discussions, because I think they're still changing a lot at the state level of figuring out what's been working, what's not been working at Cohort 1, to see how things will move forward. Yesterday, there was a big discussion about the data that's required. There's this large data dictionary, it's this big flow chart, and it's very intimidating when you look at it, a lot of stuff that we'll have to report, so it's a heavy lift on the admin side as well as the clinical side. So they're looking at maybe adjusting that. One of the items that came up yesterday that they were asking for the client's social media handles, it's like, why would you, why would you ask for that? So there was some question about why there's certain data that we're supposed to be collecting, so.
I guess my main concern is that they're trying to promote the counties to go out and find the clients eligible for CARE Court is the punitive side, that if you don't do it and say that's not our job, are they going to come after you on the punitive side, because they put criminal sanctions in here too.
They haven't mentioned anything about that, they're just, you know, in that convening, they were just really encouraging behavioral health departments to start doing petitions. I know they'll be collecting, they're collecting that data, because we'll have to say how many, you know, how many participants, how many petitions, who did the petitions, so they'll be looking at that data, so I'm not sure how that's gonna eventually come back around. But I think being a small county and, you know, we have our mobile team and, you know, working with law enforcement that has their heart team and the homeless navigator for Jackson, and our mobile team works with them, so if there's, because that seems to be the population that the state was really trying to encourage folks to reach out to is the unhoused population. I mean, we're already doing some of that work anyway, and those folks that want treatment or engaged in treatment are engaged in treatment, and then when we find out if there's somebody else, then we try to engage them, so I don't think our numbers are gonna be huge unless, you know, we start getting petitions from other, you know, either family members or other agencies about people that we're not, we're not familiar with.
That was just a concern from the CSAC side when this whole thing started, then they put the criminal portion into it, that they could go to the court and get a judge to make the judgments against the county criminally. I mean, that was ridiculous, because all county employees were trying to do is do their job out there and help.
Right. And I think we're fortunate as well, too, because we've been doing this planning for almost two years now, because we started, you know, talking about it when the Cohort 1 county started, so we were like, let's learn, let's learn from them as well, and have a good partnership with our court. So, and we've been meeting on a monthly basis, and so I think that in other counties, those sanctions are coming from the court level. So, I mean, our goal, working with the court, is to provide, be able to provide those services, work collaboratively with the court in the best interest of the participants, and to be able to provide those services, rather than it be something where if, because early on, the state had indicated that if somebody fails their care plan or care agreement, that the courts can choose to sanction or fine the behavioral health department, and that's nothing that we've discussed, because our goal is to work together to provide whatever services that we can.
Thank you.
And then there was just the websites up there for behavioral health. We have a CARE Court website that has links to go to the state website that has lots and lots of information, so if you wanna go down a rabbit hole of lots of reading about the CARE Act, there's plenty of information there. The court will also have a CARE Court website, they'll have a self-help center so that people could go in and get information about CARE Court, how to petition, and that sort of thing. And then we also have created some tri-fold.
Thank you. You know, one question I'd have is, say if somebody's having a family marital issue, whatever it may be, and a person petitions to have them go to CARE Court, and then it says the court may dismiss it, ask for behavioral health to look into it, or have some studies done, is that going to person's records, they say there's fine, there's no basis for that petition? Or is it something going like a person's record, like they're going to apply for a job? Could that be something that would be an issue, you know?
I don't know how that works on the court side. Greg, would you know, if there's, if a petition goes through the court, what that?
I don't know, I mean, I don't even know, are they, are they public proceedings? Are they confidential?
I think they are gonna be confidential, so I don't think.
So I don't think they'd be publicly available. They certainly wouldn't be, I mean, it would just be something, you know, even if it was public, it would just be something that someone would have to search the court records to find, it doesn't go on anyone's record if you pull up there.
That's why some of the asking applications, if it would be something that'd trigger a problem.
I'm not aware of any.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
Flagging that happens, just because someone's filed a petition, or even if you're receiving services, there's no, nothing that would come up.
All right, any, any other questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll come back and let you know how it goes after we get going. Thank you.
Is there any members of the public that'd like to comment on this issue? CNN, looks like no Zoomers. Well, thank you. Moving on, item 5E, we have a public health presentation of a community health assessment. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Joanne Hassan, I'm the Public Health Director, and we're here today to present our CHA, our Community Health Assessment, that we just completed last week, I think it was, or two weeks ago. We've been working on this since April or March of this year, so it's been a little bit of work for us, but we had a great team assembled and we're excited to share the results, and you were all sent an electronic copy, so we have some hard copies, if you'd like a hard copy, you good? Okay.
We have it pretty much.
All right, good, all right. So this is Stacy Frame, she's our social media PIO coordinator, but she was also the lead for the project, and she's gonna go ahead and talk about our findings.
Super excited, thanks for having us out today. The CHA Community Health Assessment, we've started out by coming up with a steering committee. Joanne put together a team within public health, and then we kind of branched out and started an advisory committee with people in the local area, faith-based organizations, community-based organizations, and also other groups like First 5 Amador and those type of groups. What we really wanted to do is try to collect all the information that we could from the county. Beautiful place that we live in, we wanna make sure that we're reaching everybody's needs. For example, we have a high level of senior population, so we wanna make sure to reach out to the areas on aging and the Amador Senior Center to get, solicit that kind of information, what are they thinking about, what are they worried about health-wise? And we put together a survey, put it out to the community, so we're collecting information two ways. The first way is through that survey, the quantitative information, qualitative information, and then the second way was through the census. We pulled specific figures from the census just for Amador County, and we compiled the all-in-one pamphlet. Super proud of this. Did you guys have questions so far before I go through some of the facts? No? The one thing that was super astonishing to me was the lack of transportation. That kept coming up quite a bit in the survey and then in the census as well. So when we put a public health lens on it, what we're looking at is how do we not just get people transportation, but how can we move our services, what we're doing, immunizations, flu shots, those kinds of things, out to the public? So this is one of those questions that informs the decisions that we make, what grants we go over, how we spend the money, and where we focus that grant money, because we are 100% grant-funded, so we have to really look at things in a way that is big picture. From this CHA, we are going to develop what's called a CHIP, a Community Health Improvement Plan. We're looking to start in the spring, and that's where we take all of the information from this CHA and put it together in an action plan, so that when we're going out and we are part of the community, we're really making an impact. Yeah?
Do you have any questions?
That was easy enough.
Yeah.
Thank you, have a wonderful holiday.
Yeah, you guys sound great.
Hey, you too.
Thank you.
Item 5F is 2024 CSAC, it's California State Association of Counties Annual Meeting Update, and this is a report by supervisors Forster and Brown regarding the recent CSAC annual meeting.
One of the meetings that I attended was the Administrative Justice Policy Committee meeting, and it was really an eye-opener, you know, they kind of did a shock and awe for human trafficking and showing videos of ladies, independent sex workers, if you will say, being kidnapped straight off the road and, you know, and then used, you know, and there's people watching it, and nobody lifted a finger to help these ladies.
Where'd this happen at roughly, do you know? Was it New York, Mexico?
No, this was Orange County, LA, Sacramento, Lake County, and it's moving in, that's what they were saying, is this is moving into the rural areas, because there is some pressure against it. What's really moving into rural areas is child trafficking, and part of the reasoning behind it was it's making more money than it is selling drugs.
I'll tell you, you can stop it.
What's that?
I'll tell you, you can stop it.
What's that?
Capital punishment. And like I said at a meeting one time, quite a while back, I says, people doing that kind of actions, especially repeated, repeated actions, I don't care if we shoot them, hang them, or use them for road base. It's okay. That would, that would, that would send a message.
Understand.
And take care of the problem.
But what was interesting, that part of the drug trafficking was, is that it costs them, you know, they have to buy the drugs, then they have to sell it. But if they, if they get caught with the drugs, you know, then they have to buy the drugs again to, to sell them again next time. On, on child trafficking, they just go out and find another child. It doesn't cost them anything, really, on all intents and purposes. And so that was the, the big takeaway is that this is a, this is growing bigger. It's not getting smaller. Because the biggest thing is, for most people, human trafficking is becoming background noise. It's just something that's there that people aren't caring about as much as they used to.
And that, and you don't, you don't have the punishment like there was way back when.
Agreed.
So if I said, if you, if you say, hey, I can make a lot of money, and I can go and do this, and there's not a dire consequence, oh, well. That's, I hate to hear, hear what you're saying. I mean, I don't doubt it, but it's, it's not a good thing at all.
Yeah. So CSAC is working to find champions in law enforcement and family justice to break down the silos and try to work together. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, I'm going to cover a couple of policy committee meetings. I thought it was an overall very good meeting. I appreciate Supervisor Brown. It helps to have two supervisors there to cover all these policy committees. Health and Human Services, they, I'm just going to brief this one. The Foster Family Agency Insurance Crisis was talked about. Very important issue for all counties because of Proposition One and the planning and implementation update there. And then they covered a couple of other issues. Proposition One, planning and implement, implementation update, and the Raise California Strong and Overview of the First Five Californias New Child Care Campaign. And then Government Financing Administration. And interestingly enough, here, we have an Amador County resident, Eric Lawyer, who's the, the representative for this committee, the CSAC representative from Sutter Creek. So that's kind of nice to have a Sutter Creek, or Sutter Creek and Amador County native working for CSAC. First item they covered, had a panel of county CEOs or CAOs on county budgets, past, present, and future. The one thing I brought up there was our issue with the jail and having to deal with all these state agencies and how all of them tend to not work real well with counties and increase our costs, including the State Fire Marshal, the Department of Finance, General Services, and BSCC, which BSCC tends to be the easiest to work with for counties. But the Fresno County CEO agreed that they were having a problem with State Fire Marshal. I don't know how we're ever going to control that. We've tried. We've met with John Hopkins, and I met with the State Fire Marshal. He said he would take care of everything. He was brand new. And then eight months later, he was gone. And the problems never get solved. And State Fire Marshal continues to be a thorn in all counties' sides. Instead of just letting us run it with our own fire departments, they have to, every time it's a state project, they get involved. Interestingly enough, they talked about the amount of measures on the ballot. There were over 700 measures on the ballot for local tax and bond measures, 539 just for that, most ever. Seventy percent passed. So we were in that 30%. Maybe we should talk to the other 70% and see how they were successful. There were 293 school bonds. And then the, they talked briefly about the 28 Olympic Games in California and how that would, would stream over to other counties and benefit other counties. So it's not just going to be in Los Angeles County. People from all over the world are going to come in and visit California for the Olympics, but then they want to visit other places in California. So our tourism agencies should be prepared for that and take advantage of it. That's kind of the residual effect of the Olympics you don't really think about. The Administration of Justice Policy Committee Meeting, we had, as Supervisor Brown said, the Human Trafficking Victims of Crime Act. But I attended the CSAC Finance Corporation Roundtable where they had four different areas represented, mostly business. It was an interesting discussion on business in California in general. Lastly, the Housing and Land Use Transportation Committee Meeting. This was kind of dismaying, as it usually is. The first panel was on advanced clean fleets regulations. And Yakun Chow, she's the manager of the Mobile Source Control Division. She listed the four areas they're monitoring. One of those areas, there's public, private, and one of those areas is county governments and city governments. She was really upbeat and said they would give exemptions. Basically, it sounded like if you asked for one, you'd get it. We're finding, we know that's not the way it is in reality. And she was called on that. The Deputy Director of Public Works from Ventura County was very clear that they're trying to meet all the goals and mandates of California Air Resources Board, but some are impossible because the technology is not there yet. I think we're going to, Amador County's going to find that out in 2027 when our exemption ends for snowplows. And all counties were very clear that you can't, you can't plow roads with an electric snowplow. It just doesn't work. So I don't know how the county's going to deal with that. As you said, Supervisor Ornato, maybe just keep using them. Well, then you're going to face the wrath of the Air Resources Board. So I don't know how to deal with this. They've already told Chevron before when they testified and said, we can't meet your goal because the, we don't have the technology to get there. And the Air Resources Board said, well, just do it. Just do it, doesn't, doesn't work. You got to have the technology. So that was one discussion there. The other was Kiana Valentine, who, who used to be Kiana Bus, as the, as the staff member for this policy committee. Now she works for the Transportation California as their executive director. She spoke about the options for sustaining transportation funding. She listed the fuel excise tax, fuel sales tax, vehicle registration fees, including the ZEVs, kilowatt-hour tax, road user charge, which could be time-based or distance-based, and the statewide tolling, all her options. The California Road Charge Program, California's one of 38 states conducting research. We've got some pilot programs going right now, and three have transitioned into full-fledged voluntary programs with mandatory to follow. And then on the policy considerations and obstacles, the administrative costs, technology, privacy, and data security, fairness and equity, interoperability, commercial vehicles, public awareness and acceptance, rate setting, eligible uses, voter thresholds. The changes are coming. We know that. They're probably going to go to a pay-as-you-drive model like Oregon has and at least one other state. I, I don't know exactly when. I'm guessing around 2030. The pilots have been in place already.
And that, that'll be a good deal for the urban areas because when they want to go skiing once a, a month, they'll travel on roads that are paid for by the, by the rurals, basically.
Yep. So she listed a bunch of options for the strategy and timeline, but not a really schedule. So none of that's been figured out yet. There's the transportation funding issue in 2025. There's informational hearings on the future funding issues and tools. SB 1121 report, that's on statewide multimodal transportation needs assessment. And SB 695, State Highway System Investments, and SB 339, a road charge pilot program results. I think the key is, if they implement a new program, they have to get rid of the old program so that we're not being double taxed. Because right now, we're paying at the pump. And we should, you shouldn't have to do both. So all of these policy committees, they have a, are listed on the CSAC website, and you can go there and actually see all of these slide presentations that were put together. And I plan on doing that on a couple that I was not able to attend personally. But it, they were all great programs. And all of the policy committees then went into their platform updates and language changes. The one I, I forgot to mention was the Administration of Justice. They've actually put in their platform new language on AI and how to handle that. So CSAC adheres to their policy very strictly. When you try to promote change, the first thing they do is go to their policy and say, is that something that CSAC should be advocating for? So that's the end of my report.
If I may, Chair, I have one more minor item here, is Agriculture and Environmental National Resource Committee. The Deputy Director of Agriculture gave us a briefing on that. And out of all the 58 counties, fairgrounds, they need over $2 billion in upgrades to be proper. So they're, as they recognize that those are all state properties and that they are also the center hubs normally during wildfires, you know, for cow fire, that these are, these fairgrounds need to be upgraded to create a better environment for cow fire and our own people.
When they're saying upgrades, basically, that you think that they kind of meant maintenance or actually upgrades.
Across the board. Yeah, they, he was very generalized in, in his statement in that aspect. But he's, he's visited all, you know, those, they're all 58 counties have fairgrounds, and I guess some cities have fairgrounds also. Yes, because he was calling out 78, or 72, you know, total grounds.
Well, yeah, when something drastic goes down, it's, it's kind of, it's, I know in Amador County, it's been like the fairgrounds, or it seemed like the rancheria is kind of like the main, the main places.
So they recognize that, and they're, he's trying to prioritize that in the, in the state budget.
Yeah, I'd like to add on to that. I, I spoke up there because several things he said, and, and other supervisors that got under their skin a little bit, that they want to, I understand, they want to prioritize things that fairs do to make money. But it sounded like they want to take kids showing animals, it's a money, it's, at the best, it's even, if not losing money for the fairgrounds. And they pretty much were indicating they want to put higher priority things that are making money. Well, you know, there's more to making money. Sometimes you're teaching kids a lot of valuable skills. One, how to take care of projects, how to follow through, how to manage your time, how to manage your money. So they, they understand that. He backed off real quick when I said that. But the other thing, he, all the supervisors hit him on the appointments are not being made to fair boards. We have an issue now where we don't have a quorum right now on our fair board because of one individual with some health issues. And he said, well, they're working on it. And I, I told him that I know we have many active applications. And he said, well, I only know of two. Well, I got on my phone and texted CEO Hoffman from our fair, and he said, he thinks we have at least four active, but 10 applications. They're just considering two out of that.
Wow.
So, and he, Rich Hoffman, thought he knew the two they were considering, but we have at least 10 applications there. The problem is, the governor's office has said, fair board appointments are not a priority. That's in their own wording. So as, as far as the, the ongoing issues with fair, fairgrounds and, and what needs to be done to make them resilient, I mean, we kind of saw that with the last fire we had, where the staging area was the fairgrounds. And they basically got a lot of their electrical work done free to upgrade it and bring it up to standard so they could stage all of the, the vehicles there. So, and it, it does come in handy, and they do recognize fairs need to be their, their, an ideal avenue when you have an emergency, whether it be an earthquake, fire, or anything else, for staging to occur because of the size and the, the room availability.
Supervisor Forster, to your original comments on, the gal said that if you wanted extensions, it'd be no problem. You just have to apply. And then the fellow from Ventura said that he's, nobody's ever applied and got one.
No, he didn't say that.
Oh.
He, all he said is that the technology isn't there. Others said they, that they have been applying and remains to be seen. But the air board is really not giving on their timelines. If you don't meet their timelines, they don't have a lot of forgiveness. I think the exemptions they give, it sounded like on a case-by-case basis, and they're fewer rather than more.
Should we push in for an exemption? Because I didn't think there was even a possibility you could get.
I think we already have. A small county exemption puts us out to 2027.
Yeah, and that was supposed to be the drop dead day, right?
Right. And, and the problems we've seen are multiple. The, the cost involved, the time involved, just to get a, a new fire engine is three to four to five years now. So it, it's really, it's a can of worms. And I don't know how you're going to get past the air board because they're, they're working and making decisions more on philosophical stances rather than reality.
I get that. Yeah. So as long as we've got our hat in the ring, though, if we can get an exemption, we want to get it.
Yep. Sometimes you walk out of these meetings with more frustration than you do happiness.
That's no lie.
I understand that.
Well, I think the, the air board won't change what, what they're doing until Silicon Valley ceases to exist to a certain degree, or you go to the food, the store shelves, and there's no food, and where their children can't get to school. Then you'll, you'll see a hell to pay. But until then, it'll, it'll be business as normal, and they're saving the world, and.
Yeah, one of the, one of the simpler disbriefing meetings wasn't a, was, they were talking about the driverless vehicles, and they're promoting it hard, and how they'll be able to go into the snow, be able to track everything because they'll have everything GPSed. And, you know, how does this, you know, as you're talking about this, how does this affect a rural county, you know, where our, you know, roads are, are so bad? And, oh, well, we'll just be mainly in the cities. You know, they're talking Tahoe, you know, to be able to drive in the city. And they're not going to go anywhere outside the major cities. You know, and it was, to, to go to this meeting as a rural county supervisor, it was really frustrating because they were talking about spending millions in the LA Basin to get traffic to move quicker. You know, just, you know, hell, I mean, I'm not millions, billions. And so it's just, it's frustrating.
Well, and the amazing part is that all, you know, basically goes down the population.
Yeah.
And as you bring more and more people in, into the state, nation, whatever, you're going to have more conflicts, you have more problems. And so the little group that's promoting all this clean energy and yada, 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 not so much clean energy, but a, a lot of these policies, they're saying, one's saying, bring all the people in. So it's kind of like they really want to solve some of their issues, keep a few people out. Any more comment? Members of the public like to comment?
Good morning, my colleagues. Dan Epperson, Supervisor-elect, 23 votes, terrifying. Yeah, I enjoyed the CSAC. I appreciate the county sending me down. A couple of things on the carb situation. I think the biggest problem they have there is they don't have a real cradle-to-grave concept. They call it ZEV, you know, zero emission vehicles. It's a misnomer. They don't consider mining, and then finally put them in the grave. I mean, at, at some point, that's going to be discussion because that's really the problem. They don't understand that there is an impact. It's pretty significant, talking to people. What else? The fairgrounds, they're looking at disaster relief sites, trying to fund it kind of that way, just to kind of encourage that. Also, I realize, moment by moment, how large my shoes that I'm feeling are going to be. I was really honoring to see Supervisor Forster. Forster honored there in a number of ways with a variety of things. I just appreciate that, and him showing me around, just introducing me to people. I appreciate that sincerely. And just on the human trafficking thing, the nexus here just around the corner, they actually just started a program recently where they are actually educating and reaching at-risk youth and women in Calaveras and Amador County. So they find people that are at risk, and they educate them, try to train them, and to show what human trafficking looks like. Because a lot of times, we think it looks one way, but how they actually groom kids and women to get involved in this is completely different. I mean, kidnapping is one avenue, obviously, but they, they're discussing in kind of gory detail of how that process works. And it was alarming, and it is expanding, so.
Was it shock and awe?
Oh, yeah, it was. They warned us ahead of time, said, this is going to bug you. You might want to, you know, plug your ears and close your eyes, but, you know, can't do that. So here we are. So anyway, I just wanted to greet you and thank you for, for
Signing too.
Well, signing, I will definitely do that, too.
Well, thank you.
I think the, the human trafficking issue, I mean, we need to be careful in Amador County. We have an individual in our county who, whose daughter was at one of our big box stores, and she noticed she was being followed by a gentleman, and it ended up being two of them. So people need to be aware, it's not just in the big cities, it's happening in our county, too.
Agreed.
Well, like I said, there's a way to take care of it. Moving on, anyone remembers a public to comment on that issue, item? See none? Item 5G is minutes, and I, I have a little change in there, too.
I have one, too. What's yours?
Mine was on, oh, item up there on the Ridge Road where the PGE item, it'd be page six. I think it should also reflect in there, I believe the board gave myself and Supervisor Crew authority to pick which, which option to take or which route to go. Because there it says, you know, as far as how much money they obtained and answered, but I think also the, the board had given Supervisor Crew and myself authority to, to move forward. Just reflect.
And Mr. Chair, I appreciate the work you did on that. That's, you know, driving up Ridge Road Friday night in the storm and everything else, it was a very nice drive to go up that road.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Page three, under the second action, the claim of William Delian. I think it should just be direction given to staff rather than the action claimed denied pursuant to the following motion, so. Right?
Yep. Yeah.
With that, I, those changes, I'd move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Forster, second by Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimous. Wow, looks like we're right about on time for a public hearing. We'll take about a, want a five-minute break?
Sure.
Okay. We'll take a five-minute break and come back. Oh, about, oh, say 10:38, 10:40, something like that?
10:40, make it right.
Call this meeting back to order. And this is a public hearing scheduled for 10:30, and it's item 6A, Surveying Department, Public Hearing for a Public Utility Easement Abandonment and Adopt the Resolution or Approval for the abandonment and Certificate of Merger for William C. Lindsay.
Good morning. The property owner has asked for this change. They would like to add a garage to the existing home. They're on the intersection at the end of the road, so there's only a few neighbors nearby that called and had questions, but no department or no customer had any issue.
Okay. It looks like there's a lot, a lot of other accesses besides going across through that property, so. Nobody had an issue? I don't, I don't see an issue with it myself.
Nope.
Any questions from the board? At this time, we open the public hearing. Anybody like to comment on this item?
Move to close public.
Second.
Move to close public hearing.
We have a motion by Forster and a second by Brown to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It carries unanimous. Now we're looking for action.
Move to approve the two resolutions. One, the intention to vacate a public utility easement for William C. Lindsay, and the other issuing a certificate of merger to William C. Lindsay.
Second.
Motion by Forster, second by Axe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimous.
Thank you.
I think we got our closed session done, didn't we, I believe?
We're done.
Yep. So we're, this meeting's adjourned.
Very efficient meeting you run there, Judge.
The next meeting?
Yes, sir.
We only have one meeting in December, correct?
Correct.
Yep. So we are adjourned until, what's the date here? December 17th, 2024, at 9 o'clock AM. Thank you.